Check, check.
Testing, mic testing. Testing mic.
I wish.
Happy New Year to you as well. Came so fast.
I know.
Twenty-five slows down.
And it's crazy because it's the first full week of the year, but we're already on the eighth.
A lot of times we'll cancel January. In November, we're like, we gotta go.
Yeah, I, when I was waiting for the agenda, like, no, I was like, I wonder if it's gonna be live. It was like, no, I figured, I feel like this one's gonna have a whole thing.
It was a, it was a drive at the end of the year to get it all done before our Christmas quake.
But I'm sure you enjoyed it more, right?
Oh, yeah.
You're not at home.
A relief, for sure.
When we have, am I throwing that over to you?
Yeah, yeah.
To talk about his.
I'll run my chair, my chair, my.
Okay.
And then the applicants, applicant representative for two and five. Applicant representative, yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, totally, okay.
And then, and then we don't, we don't do anything with. He's already, yes, he's already sworn in. He's just here, that's why he's not on.
Perfect, thanks, okay.
Good evening, everyone. It is five o'clock and I would like to welcome you to the City Victorville Planning Commission meeting for January eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Happy New Year. I'll call this meeting to order, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Marsh.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Commissioner Messon.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Chair Kurth.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you. If you'll all please rise for the invocation, that'll be led to us by Commissioner Thomas, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Marsh.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening. First giving thanks for allowing us to successfully complete the year twenty twenty-four. Father, we thank you for the accomplishments of that year. But now we look forward to twenty twenty-five. And we ask that you guide us, Father, through this year, through the many challenges that we're going to face. But, Father, we, as we move forward, we want to be optimistic. And we want to be focused on improving conditions for the citizens of this city. So, Father, we ask that you guide us. Father, let's take time and we want to take time to pray for those people that are affected by the fires going on. Many of them have lost properties altogether, all that they own, so have mercy on them, Father, give them guidance. Provide for them the shelter, the clothing, the needs that they have. And we ask that you do that. And, Father, we know that you can. Father, bless this city and its leadership and its citizens. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Please face the American flag, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point. We have the recognition of an outgoing planning commissioner, Kenneth Cook Askins. I will turn it over to Mr. Haregi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Special recognition tonight for outgoing planning commissioner, Kenneth Cook Askins, Jr. If you'd please come join me up front here. Commissioner Cook Askins has served the city since two thousand and twenty-one. Next slide, please. And in that time, we have a little snippet of the items that have been approved and the work we've done. It's not a complete list, but it goes over a lot of the milestones we've hit. So, over four million square feet of industrial square footage has been approved. Over one hundred and seventy-six thousand square feet of new commercial square footage. Over seventeen hundred single-family residential permits have been approved. Next slide, please. During this time, we've also seen some new tenants come into the city of Victorville. This would include new retail establishments and dealerships that create jobs for the community. The High Desert Pay Center that brought a much-needed skilled nursing facility to the city. And we also opened the city's Wellness Center to address homelessness in the city and provide a path to recovery for those who need. Lastly, we also, one of the other items we did was the remodel of the Green Tree Golf Course into a city library. Next slide, please. And some of the upcoming items you'll see on the board here, this is not all-inclusive, but we have new hotels coming, new quicks or restaurants, things the community has asked for, coming in the pipeline in the city of Victorville, that Commissioner Cook Askins has been a part of. Next slide, please. And with regard to our future growth. Commissioner Cook Askins was on the board when we approved one of the first mixed-use developments here in the city of Victorville with the adoption of ordinance number two, four, three, one, and the Victor Valley Connection. He was integral in the city, complying with state law and adopting the six-cycle housing element, as well as the associated land use, safety and environmental justice elements of the general plan, which was a heavy, heavy pull for the entire planning commission. With that, he also reviewed the zoning ordinance update that introduced mixed-use zoning, the low-density residential infill overlay district, and the health and wellness overlay districts to the city, which we had not had before. And we also just recently adopted the city's deemed-approved ordinance to regulate alcohol and tobacco sales to enhance community health and well-being. We thank you, Commissioner Cook Askins, for all the work you've done for the city. We have a plaque here for you, recognizing your time with the city of Victorville. And thank you for all that you've done, and we hope this isn't goodbye, just see you later.
Thank you so much, city. My family's, it's been an honor serving on the planning commission, and my family's been residents of Victorville since the nineteen thirties. And I'm a proud fourth-generation graduate of the city and being a resident of the city, fourth-generation resident. I tremendously love our city, and we have a great city, and thank you very, very much to everyone, thank you.
Well, on behalf of the planning commission, I would personally like to say thank you for your service. And it's been a pleasure getting to know you and serving with you. I guess also, on that note, I would like to welcome Commissioner Derek Marshall, who's new to our commission. We're looking forward to getting to know you and having you up here, serving the cities.
Awesome, thanks, I'm really looking forward to rolling up my sleeves and working with y'all.
Great. Okay, at this time, we have some reorganization business. We need to appoint a chairman and a vice chairman. Would you like to run this portion, Ms. Clerk?
Certainly. Nominations are in order for the office of chairman. While nominations do not require a second, any member may offer one to signal endorsement and may also vote for him or herself. I open the nomination period, are there nominations for the office of chairman?
Commissioner Thomas nominate, Rob, excuse me, Rob Kurth as chairman.
Does Commissioner Kurth accept the nomination?
I do, thank you.
Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Okay, we'll move through procedures on this, even though there's no additional nominations. Hearing no further nominations, the nomination period is closed and we'll proceed to appoint a chairman. When called upon, please vote by stated nominee's name you wish to hold the office, and I will go ahead and take the vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Commissioner Kurth.
Commissioner Marshall?
Commissioner Kurth.
Commissioner Messon? Commissioner Thomas?
Commissioner Kurth.
Commissioner Kurth.
Myself.
Commissioner Kurth is appointed chair. We will now move on to the appointment of vice chair. Nominations are in order for the office of vice chair, while nominations do not require a second, any member may offer one to signal endorsement and may also vote for him or herself. I open the nomination period, are there nominations for the office of vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Messon for vice chair.
Does Commissioner Messon accept the nomination?
I accept.
Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing no further nominations, the nomination period is closed and we'll proceed to appoint a vice chairman. When called upon, please vote by stated nominee's name you wish to hold the office. I will move forward with taking the vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Commissioner Messon.
Commissioner Marshall?
Commissioner Messon.
Commissioner Messon.
Myself.
Commissioner Thomas?
Commissioner Messon.
Chair Kurth.
Commissioner Messon.
Thank you all, Commissioner Messon has been appointed vice chair.
Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Messon. Is it the formality that we would change seats at this meeting, or would that be next?
Next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, then at this point, it's time for general public comments. These would be comments from anyone in the public, other than items that are on our agenda tonight, which you'd be able to make comments on as well. Do we have any general public hearing comment cards?
We do. Our first speaker would be Latasha Maynard.
I will open up the public comment hearing. Yes.
... plus, "The potential for many more is unacceptable and outright harmful for the health and well-being of our children, families, and all in the community. The current industrial zoning has allowed three warehouses to operate in close proximity to thousands of residents and children. These facilities will produce indefinite air pollution, noise pollution, and heavy truck traffic. While, while they'll directly impact the quality of life for nearby residents, studies have shown that such pollution can cause or exacerbate respiratory issues like asthma disproportionately affecting children whose lungs are still developing. It is absolutely outrageous that these health hazards are permitted to thrive right next to our schools. While children are supposed to feel safe and healthy, not subjected to industrial fallout. Furthermore, the presence of these warehouses will degrade the surrounding environment, contributing to reduced property values, diminished community pride, and safety concerns due to the consistent stream of industrial traffic. This is a clear injustice to the hard-working families who've moved here with the expectation of safe and supportive neighborhoods. A call to action to rezone for the community health and growth. We propose rezoning this industrial area to prioritize residential community-friendly land use, such as parks, recreational facilities, and mixed-use development. That includes local businesses and affordable housing. This shift will not only mitigate the environmental risk, but also create opportunities for economic growth that align with the needs and values of the community. Why this matters? The children attending nearby schools Gus Franklin, Jr., Melva Davis Academy, West Creek Elementary are part of our future, and their health and safety must come first. By rezoning this land, we actively are choosing to protect their right to clean air, safe streets, and a supportive environment. Families living in these neighborhoods deserve to feel secure. Families living in these neighborhoods deserve to feel secure, and they should not have to fight for basic protections against industrial pollution. This is not just about land use, it's about justice, equity, and the moral obligation to put people above profit. Approving these warehouses to be built sends a clear message that corporate interests outweigh the health and well-being of our children. We must reject the narrative that, and take a stand for the community. Recommendations: immediate rezoning of these industrial areas to align with community-focused uses, enhance quality of life, such as green spaces, public amenities, and sustainable housing. A larger buffer zone, a policy to ensure industrial areas are located further away from schools, parks, residential zones, and in future, community consultation transparency throughout the rezoning process to ensure voices are affected, voices that are affected.
Your time is up.
Okay. I live less, I live more than three hundred feet. That's why I wasn't notified, like a thousand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I do not have any additional speaker cards for general public comment.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public hearing on general public comments. And we can move to our public hearing items. Item number one, can I have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Senior Planner Daisy Kawasaki will present this item as she authored it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Happy New Year, planning commissioners. Agenda item number one is case number ADMN-two-four-dash-zero-zero-one-five-four. It is a request for a second modification to conditional use permit CUP-dash-eighteen-dash-ninety-four to alter a non-conforming use and associated conditions of approval to allow for a second tenant providing services to transitional aged youth, including a youth drop-in center, sheltering, and supportive services to operate simultaneously with the original tenant, High Desert Homeless Services, operating shelter, offering sheltering and supportive services to the general homeless population at an existing site zoned IPD Industrial Park District located at one-four-zero-four-nine Amerigosa Road. This proposal is being brought forward to the planning commission for your consideration based on the specific wording of the original conditional use permits approval, which states, "Approval of this conditional use permit shall permit only one tenant. The utilization of more than one tenant upon the subject property shall require planning commission review and approval." Typically, something like this would otherwise be handled administratively. Approval of this item being presented tonight would allow both High Desert Homeless Services and the Family Assistance Program to combine their resources and work together as co-tenants of the facility to offer shelter, meals, permanent housing placement, case management, and other supportive services specific to the transitional-aged youth or TAE population aged eighteen to twenty-four years old, as well as the addition of an after-school youth drop-in center for at-risk youth aged fourteen to twenty-four years old. High Desert Homeless Services has operated from this location since nineteen ninety-four, providing sheltering and supportive services to the area's general homeless population. Early in twenty-twenty-four, the facility closed due to reported financial issues, and they are hoping to rectify this with this proposal. The Family Assistance Program has similarly operated within Victorville for multiple decades. However, their FamSpot facility on C Street has been temporarily closed due to construction activities associated with their tiny home village project, which was approved by the planning commission in twenty-twenty-two, leaving them without a place to offer their services. High Desert Homeless Services and the Family Assistance Program have indicated that they would mutually benefit from the combining of resources to operate together from the Amerigosa facility until a time when they can once again operate independently. The focus on the TAE population specifically would also result in more annual bed space for the general public at the city-operated Wellness Center. Conditions of approval have been included, which would bring the site into conformance with current code standards, including the requirement for trash enclosure upgrades, parking lot repairs, and landscape maintenance. Conditions related to operational standards have also been included to ensure that the facility conforms to Title XVI standards related to emergency shelters that were not in place when this facility originally opened thirty years ago, including the requirement for a detailed security plan to be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to occupancy. Staff would like to make note that the commissioners received a late addition memo for this item outlining the applicant's concerns with some of the proposed conditions of approval for the project. As discussed in the memo, a staff recommendation has been made to modify condition number twenty to allow six months post-occupancy to complete the required parking lot repairs. This coincides with the standard six months provided to perform required trash enclosure upgrades that the site will also need to do, as included in condition number nineteen. If approved as recommended, condition number twenty within resolution number P-dash-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-one would be modified to state, within six months of the issuance of a business license or certificate of occupancy, all parking areas and access thereto, including access to trash enclosures, shall be repaired. Repair shall include repaving, patching, and/or slurry coat and seal as needed to repair broken and weathered asphalt throughout the site. Additionally, all parking spaces and directional arrows shall be restripped. With that being said, staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, receive testimony regarding the proposed project, and take the following actions. Find the project categorically exempt under section one-five-three-zero-one of the California Environmental Quality Act entitled Existing Facilities, and adopt resolution number P-dash-twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-one, approving conditional use permit modification case number ADMN-twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-one-five-four. Subject to the attached conditions of approval with the recommendation, recommended modification to condition number twenty is noted. Staff remain available for any questions you may have, and I would also like to note that both of the applicants are here tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Does the commission have any questions of staff on, on any of that report?
I do have a question. One of the provisions here stipulates that the applicant is requesting, sorry, is requesting additional time to, which staff, I guess, agreed to do six months for the reservicing and so forth of the payment. But another concern I had was, and I'm okay with that, another concern I had, though, was the changing from one tenant to two tenants. And again, I'm okay with that, but then I read a letter back in the package that requested from the applicant, changing it from one to three. Is that part of this? I'll show you. I can show you the letter that was included in the package. It was High Desert Homeless Services Inc., letter dated September thirtieth. And basically, they say in their letter, "We would like to modify the existing approved condition" to read, "Approval of this condition, use, use permit shall permit two tenants. The utilization of more than two tenants upon the subject property shall require planning commission review and approval." So it appears that they want to include a provision where there are more than two tenants. And I can show you the letter that I'm looking for.
Yeah, for, for this specific project, they're asking only for High Desert Homeless Services and Family Assistance Program. We have included a condition of approval within the project. Number four, planning, condition number four, which would state that if any additional change in tenancy beyond the two or a reversion back to one tenant would require a conditional use permit modification or possibly an entirely new conditional use permit. So it would be reviewed at a future time if the third tenant were to be proposed.
So it is two?
Just two.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Okay, so since that's a single building, and it's got, you have two different tenants. One is the regular unsheltered residence within the city, and the other is going to be youth. Is, are there, is there a requirement that there is a separation within that facility to where youth and drop-in youth or whatnot, they're separate from, there's a physical barrier between the two?
Yes, the site has two individual buildings. One would be utilized for the dormitory, the, the sheltering, essentially. The other building would be utilized for the youth drop-in center, any of the case management aspects, the supportive services, basically. The population that's being, being served, both shelter-wise as well as the youth drop-in center, are still that the TAE, ranging from fourteen to twenty-four years old. Those that would remain on-site for sheltering would be eighteen to twenty-four. But yes, there would be a distinct separation between activities occurring with sheltering versus those with just the youth drop-in center and their supportive services.
And then the, I guess, a follow-up to that, or not really a follow-up, but the other question I have. Has there been consideration made that maybe all this can be incorporated with the Wellness Center? Since the Wellness Center seems more equipped to, to me, I mean, it does. So, I mean, is this something that's been considered?
It, it, they're, they're a private entity that's been operating there, looking to remain in operation. In fact, as noted in the staff report, they would be, by taking on that specific TAE population, they would be opening up additional resources to the Wellness Center to house, or rather, to shelter the general population. I think they would kind of operate hand in hand together if they could take referrals from the Wellness Center as well, as the applicant has indicated to us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'll open up the public hearing on agenda item number one. I understand the applicant may be here tonight, and if so, do they want to speak to us?
Yes, Mr. Waldron's filled out a comment card.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Waldron. I'm the director for High Desert Homeless Services. I want to thank you guys for your time and your consideration, you know, in reviewing our conditional use permit and giving us this opportunity to not only reopen, but to better serve our community as we partner with Family Assistance Program to address the needs of the transitional-aged youth in our community. So currently, we're not operating, and they're not operating. So it was like a match made in heaven, where we came together and were able to help the same population. And at the same time, as Ms. Daisy stated, you know, we would be able to lessen the burden at the Wellness Center, and we would directly help the transitional-aged youth. So if they had individuals that were checking into the Wellness Center, they would be able to come to us, where we're just dealing with that specific demographic alone, and it would free up beds at the Wellness Center. So, you know, the homeless population in the city of Victorville is not, you know, the Wellness Center is not even able to put a dent into that. And it would free up much-needed beds so that they could help other individuals who are over twenty-four, and that way, they could better serve them, and we could work together in unison and better serve our community. And, and the reason why we're here tonight is we, we, we truly appreciate Ms. Daisy. She went over and beyond to helping me to put in this application. I've never done this before. So it's kind of new for me, and she helped me walk through the process. And we would just like to maybe ask your guys' consideration on condition number fourteen. We've been, for the security plan and having to, you know, have a licensed security guard twenty-four hours a day at the, it's, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars burden on us. And as you guys very well know, we closed due to lack of funding. You know, back when COVID started, you know, a lot of the, we rely heavily on donations from the public and the community, you know, and businesses, and, and a lot of them stopped giving because they were so, you know, they didn't know what they were going to do, you know? And a lot of people lost employment on, on it, you know, because they weren't able to go to jobs. So our funding revenue dropped down tremendously. And having this extra burden of having a security guard on-site would make it, you know, almost impossible for us to operate. We've been there for over thirty years. We've never had any major issues or concerns. And we're like, not even a quarter mile from the, the police department. And if we were to have security guards there, all they are is just for a visual deterrent. I myself, when we were at the transportation center doing the warming shelter, got my licensed security guard, so I could volunteer and be of security there, so we didn't have to pay for it. But that, when you do the training, you're only able to observe and report, and we have twenty-four-hour staffing there. During the day, when, when most of the people are there, we have up to ten staff there. So there's more than staffing enough. You know, we're only asking to, you'll open for thirty beds. So we, it's not like we have a hundred and seventy beds, like at the Wellness Center, where they need security because they're dealing with, you know, the, the lower, the low-barrier population, and we're not. You know, so we would just like to ask you guys if you could take into consider that and, and review that and maybe take that one out. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daryl Evey.
Hi, my name is Daryl Evey with Family Assistance Program. And just to give you a little background on this, to answer a couple of questions that were asked earlier, these are two separate buildings, shared with a shared courtyard, so that's why they can be separated. The concept of this is a very common concept in our field, in the nonprofit field, working with homelessness. Having a drop-in center attached to a shelter works really well, because what that does is it allows young people who need a place to stay to come to the drop-in center. They can get supportive services, such as job training, anger management classes, all those supportive things to be, help people become self-sufficient. And for those who don't have a place to sleep at night, they can just walk across the alleyway or across the courtyard, and they have a place to sleep that night. That's how this concept works. It's a very common concept in what we do. It's not common in the High Desert, because we don't have one here currently. But I can point you to hundreds of them across the country, that I have visited many of them. Just for numbers, there are currently fifty homeless young people today. Fifty young people between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four who are sleeping in their car or under a bush somewhere tonight. Of those fifty, sixteen of them live in there here in the High Desert. If this place was open today, we would be able to say that there are no homeless youth in the High Desert, which would be a really powerful statement to be able to say, because there are very few communities that can make that statement. This program will get us there, so that I'm really proud of as well. There are a couple of other concerns. You asked about the Wellness Center. Wellness Centers are a different population. I'm sure all of you have probably interacted with teenagers at times. And you can understand that teenagers are a little bit different to work with than older people or little children. And what we found is that teenagers are very disruptive when they're in a regular shelter or a congregate-style facility that's designed for adults. This will allow for a facility that has young people in a place for young people. Their needs are different. They need things such as how to not smoke weed every day. They need to know, like, how to do laundry, because many of them have never done laundry before. They've never looked for a job. They've never become employed. They've never worked with learning how to have a boss tell them what to do and not tell them where to go. You know, those are the types of things that we teach the kids when they're in these programs. That's why we do it differently. We're a little bit frustrated with some of the conditions. Daisy's been great to work with, and she solved most of our issues. We were concerned that we had really needed to have this new conditional use permit, because most businesses, if you make a minor change to the business, you don't have to get a new conditional use permit. But it seems that the staff are under the impression that the planning commission holds nonprofits to a much higher standard than for-profits. So one thing I would like to hear from all of you is, do you believe that nonprofits should be held to a higher standard and should have requirements that for-profit businesses have? Should they have the same requirements, or should they be different? For example, the hours of operation or what days we're allowed to operate. I looked through the last six months, and I could not see a single conditional use permit in the past six months that listed hours of operation of, of a business. Every for-profit business, whether they're selling alcohol or tobacco, none of them had that requirement. But yet, we're stuck with this requirement, which honestly, we can't meet. We are taking, next week, I'm taking twelve kids to go snowboarding. And these twelve kids are going to meet at our facility at seven a.m. And these twelve kids are going to meet at our facility at seven AM, which is outside of our hours of operation, which means technically it will be illegal. And then we're going to go snowboarding all day. And then we bring them back, we probably won't get back until nine o'clock at night, which means technically we will be illegal. We also, in a few months, are taking a, a group of kids, we're hiking Mount Baldy. We're doing a whole series of hikes, if any of you like hiking, you're welcome to join us. We're hiking Mount Baldy, then we're hiking San Gregorio, then San Jacinto, and then with it all wrapped up in September, we're taking a group of young people to Mount Whitney, which is the highest peak in the continental United States, and they're going to hike Mount Whitney together. All of those hikes involve us leaving here at five, six o'clock in the morning and frequently not getting back until midnight. So I would, I request that item twelve be removed completely. Allow us to be operating twenty-four hours or whenever we need to operate. Item fourteen was the one that Jimmy just mentioned about security. I could not find any other business in, in, uh, the last six months that had a requirement for security, only us. Uh, liquor stores don't need security, but we do, which I thought was a concern. And then the item nineteen is updating the trash enclosure. That is requiring that we build a house around our trash. And I've asked that you remove that requirement as well, we currently have it. There's fencing around it, it's secure, it meets all the requirements, it's in an alleyway so it's not like anyone's going to see it anyway, and is compliant with all of our neighbors.
Your time is up.
Please request that you consider those, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no additional speaker cards for this item.
Okay. Thank you, with that, I will, um, I will close the, um, public hearing, I'll bring it back to the commission, we've heard quite, uh, quite a few comments from the, uh, the two applicants regarding, um, some of these proposed, uh, conditions, so, um, I have a few questions, um, primarily towards, uh, for staff and some discussion. But I'll start with, um, the other commissioners first. Commissioner Masson, would you like to start?
Yes, I, I had a question for staff, if, um, you happen to know, or, or Darryl as well, since you're here, if there, when the drop-in center was operational at the previous site, if there was operating hours in place then? Do we know?
Um, for the youth drop-in center, I don't believe there was, I cannot recall there was for the Tiny Home Project is when that was approved.
That's all I have at the moment, thank you.
Mr. Marsh, any, any questions or thoughts?
No, none yet.
Sure, um, so I have a question, uh, the, the stipulation requiring, uh, licensed security, I'm wondering, um, I, I think Jimmy was your name, right? Um, Jimmy had mentioned that he was licensed as security, and so I'm wondering if there's kind of a, a way to have our cake and eat it too, um, by, you know, requiring that maybe the staff have the security training so that the, the staff that are, you know, that are basically, uh, operating the facility, uh, you know, if, if, seeing as they, if, if they are trained up as security and then they can also be, uh, they can also be staff, essentially would help to maybe, uh, help them with the, the two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, I don't know where, where that cost came from, but, um, help them with the cost, and I'm wondering if that is, that's something that, that could possibly be done?
Yes, uh, thank you Commissioner, uh, Marshall. Um, potentially there is licensing differences for private security versus when a security guard is on staff of an establishment. So there is a different requirement for licensing through the state when you hire a, 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 a security guard that's specific to that location. It also raises the question about staffing. If that's, if that trained staff member were acting in a security capacity, um, it would appear difficult, um, if that staff member were, let's say, performing administrative duties or doing intake and then being able to still perform their, uh, security duties at the same time. Um, that is a large basis for the condition as well as a precedence that was set by previous approvals that the planning commission, um, has placed, um, on the, the Tiny Home Project that had a similar, uh, design and, and operating, uh, standard.
I'm kind of curious about the history of, uh, incidents with the, uh, young group that you're talking about. Is there any history of having to, uh, repeatedly call, uh, law enforcement in for issues?
Both of our programs have been operating for over thirty years and we've never had to call law enforcement for a security issue. And there are no, there was a question regarding how the security works and why it's a requirement at the wellness campus. Currently, uh, every city-owned shelter in the county has licensed security on-site because it's a city-owned facility. Every nonprofit-run facility does not have licensed facility, that licensed security guards. There are, uh, we operate seven shelters right now, our agency does. There are about thirty to thirty-five shelters in San Bernardino County that are run by nonprofits, none of them have licensed security on-site.
And you feel comfortable continuing in that vein, uh, with, uh, not having security on-site?
Yes, I think where the big difference is, everybody loves to sue the government. Whereas as a nonprofit, people tend to like us more, so we get away with things, we're able to work with our clients, and our clients tend to be a little more supportive. Someone trips and falls in my facility, they're not going to try to sue me, someone trips and falls out there, you know they're going to sue. Thank you.
And on that, um, on, as we're speaking on security, I kind of had a thought as well. I know, um, on the city side of things, we have a, uh, resident expert who's been working on these kind of issues for quite a while, and his name is Mr. Scott Webb. And I wonder just if you, not to put you on the spot, but you've been working, you know, on these shelters and these type of situations and, and, um, you know, the group home type things, what, what are your thoughts on the security, knowing this location, because they've been there for a number of years up until recently? Um, and then with the youth aspect coming into the separate building, what are you, what are your thoughts on security? How, how, how demanding should that be?
Well, I can, uh, well, good evening, uh, Chairman Kirk and Commissioners, uh, I, I can, uh, speak to the wellness center. The wellness center is a larger facility, a hundred and seventy-bed capacity. Um, it was originally envisioned to have two security guards, uh, licensed, um, and operating twenty-four-seven. When we introduced, um, minors on-site in July of last year, um, it was with consultation with the two operators on-site, um, advocating for an additional security guard. So, uh, those are two nonprofit organizations that were asking for additional security and, uh, the city accommodated that, um, through additional, uh, funding. Um, it does, uh, when you bring in minors to the site, it does bring a different dynamic. Um, in this case, you will be having, or what's being requested is, um, the TAE population sheltering, which is eighteen through twenty-four, and then you have youth drop-in, um, that's, that's mixing with that population, uh, for those supportive services. Um, so, uh, there is a concern there. Um, I think what's different with, with this location is that it's closer to other, uh, businesses, um, so there could be more of, um, a, a good neighbor, um, issue, uh, there if there's not proper oversight, um, of the surrounding area. But the conditions that were brought forward today were, were, um, merely going, um, after what was already been set in, uh, prior conditions by the commission, um, and how the city's, um, currently addressing security at our own shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I add one item to that?
Yeah, please.
Um, that condition specifically speaking to the, uh, security plan is also proposed in a manner that includes the minimum that staff would need to review a security plan. At this time, a complete security plan has not been submitted to staff. So those measures are, um, included as a, as a protective measure, so if staff is to approve a security plan, if this item is approved, we have a baseline to establish what that security plan should look like. So short of having a security plan in front of us, we included these conditions in order to, uh, set up, set a baseline. So there's opportunities there, um, if there's consideration to modify those, uh, requirements to perhaps look at a continuance of an item, there's alternatives there that the planning commission can consider to then come back to the table and ask the applicant to prepare a complete security plan that the planning commission could review for adequacy at this site.
Okay, and are you saying, um, I think I got what you said, and I, I know we've done this in the past, um, if, like, for example, if this item was, um, uh, you know, there was a motion and it was approved tonight, but if, if there was a condition that, that made it that they would not have the full approval and business license and such until they submitted a security plan, because they haven't, right, yet? Um, and I think that's something that, that the applicant, you know, could, could pretty easily do, uh, given a, a, a plan that makes sense for you knowing what we know now that the city wants. And, um, if this, and then if the city found that acceptable and moving forward, if the, if the, um, security plan is not acceptable, it would have to be worked out, and then, of course, if it's a deadlock like we've seen before, it would come back to the planning commission again. Is that a route that makes sense? I know we've seen that before.
Mr. Chair, I believe you're, you're noting perhaps with a continuance to look at that and come back to the drawing table, or do it at the administrative level?
Well, um, we've done it, well, we've done it both ways. Um, I, I, without, you know, we've, we've done some things that are contingent upon staff approving it at, at, at a staff level, if staff is satisfied. If, if, if staff's not satisfied or the applicant's not satisfied, they may then find themselves back here lobbying for reasonings of whatever it may be. But with, with the absence of seeing a security plan that I did read mentioned in here, we don't really know if there are other avenues or other things that the applicants planning on are willing to do that might make us feel a little bit more comfortable for a, a little less of a security or whatever else may be in that plan, we don't know yet. Is, is that something that staff thinks could be reasonable when it comes to the security part as an option?
Uh, uh, potentially, Mr. Chair, yes, uh, thank you. Um, I believe that the condition as written is, is staff taking that approach with the minimum set that we ensure there is a security guard and, um, with the other measures we have noted there regarding, uh, reporting and cameras and so on and so forth. Um, short of those measures, to remove those measures, uh, staff would be unsure if, uh, we have the tools in, in our toolbox to make sure that, that security plan is adequate, uh, without it being reviewed by the planning commission.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not, um, myself saying right now that I don't see a need for security because I, that's a push and pull, I know, they mentioned it's a very large cost. And, um, I, I know what this organization does and the funding is a big deal, I know that. Um, but we have to be careful as a commission not to solely take funding into the land use decisions that we make. Um, uh, but knowing that, I also, uh, I also know that staff is, uh, well aware of, of these type of uses and going through others like this, and when staff makes recommendations on, on life, safety and, and security, I, I, I really have to take that serious as well, so, um, was just trying to find an option that may make everyone happy. And I'm not sure what the other commissioners' thoughts are, once we get to a motion on that security issue as well. I think, um, are there more questions, um, from the commission that you're thinking of at this point?
Yeah, sure, so I just have one other question, what, what was the, um, the, the methodology and the logic for Monday to Saturday, nine AM to six PM? Was, was that to protect, uh, local businesses or, um, I'm just curious what the, what the logic was there?
Thank you Commissioner Marshall, I believe that was based off their application and hours of operation they proposed.
Is that, that, Ms. Kawasaki, is that what you believe was on the application when they put in? For, because I know the application asks for hours of operation and such.
Yes, their application included an attachment for a business that included a business proposal and they themselves wrote those specific hours of operation for the youth drop-in center.
Okay, and I know the applicant mentioned that, that he believed that typically hours of operation were not on conditions, but I know for a fact in my real estate career and doing a lot of CUPs and interim use permits, that's very standard, that's very standard stuff. Um, would it be a problem if that was changed? If that, if that hour, if the hours were changed maybe a little bit earlier for this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would note that condition one, number one as well speaks to hours of operation, and it does allow the zoning administrator to modify those. Certainly, we could add similar language to, uh, the subject condition, um, unless otherwise approved by the zoning administrator. Um, in those cases, special events such as hiking trips, snowboarding trips, um, perhaps if there was a catastrophic event that needed to, to, to be addressed with their, um, uh, drop-in, uh, uh, participants, we could certainly, uh, address that administratively, kind of on a one-off option, and that would be covered by the unless otherwise approved by the zoning administrator. That is noted in condition number one as well, uh, which speaks to the, uh, youth drop-in center, and I believe that, uh, same language, um, could be added to, uh, condition number twelve. So essentially, at the end of condition number twelve, unless otherwise approved by the zoning administrator, that would certainly allow for the special events as noted by the applicant.
Okay, so we believe that would, that would kind of cover, cover that issue, I know that, uh, most businesses have, have, and I know, uh, business hours are typically for, you know, there's going to be intake, we're doing our typical business of this with the youth, our programs, and, um, you know, just because somebody pulled up and met outside to go on a trip or something, that's not typically intake and business and open for business and, you know, so I don't think there'd be much of a problem there, so I, so it's okay, you believe there'll be some flexibility on that?
Absolutely, staff would, would, would not have an objection to such a modification.
I'm okay with that, um.
I had a quick question, um, for the applicant in regards to the security plan. If given the opportunity to submit one, would you submit one? Um, and then prior to submitting the application, um, were you just unsure of submitting that, uh, a plan in place, or was it just what was provided, um, you weren't sure if you needed to hire by all that, I just kind of want to see what happened there?
We were not asked for a security plan prior to this, so we didn't see this agenda item until Friday of last week, and at no point were we asked for a security plan, so that's why we didn't submit one. In our current, uh, the previous drop-in center that we had operated up, that was just a couple of months ago, that CUP did not include hours of operation. So we were able to work whenever we wanted, frequently, we were there till eight, nine o'clock at night. My concern is, is that we have a code enforcement officer right now who is hostile towards the community, and he cites anybody for anything. And if he sees someone there past six o'clock, I'm confident we will be getting a citation.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if anybody has any other, uh, thoughts, comments, or questions, now would be the time, if not, I, I, it would then be time for a, a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, to adopt, uh, item number one according to staff recommendations.
Would, would that be as, um, as amended for condition number twenty?
And twenty was?
It was in the memo, the late memo?
Yes.
Can you clarify that, I'm, I'm looking for the?
Item number twenty, um, the repaving of the parking area?
That was the late addition memos at the parking area?
Oh, okay, so that has to do with the, uh, the deferment of the, um, improvements, correct?
Mr. Chair, may I, may I clarify? Yes, the, the late addition memo was for the deferment of the improvements, and there was also a comment, perhaps if, if it's being considered to adjust, um, condition twelve as well to include, unless otherwise approved by the zoning administrator to address the hours of operation. Those are the two discussion items.
Yes, both of them.
If I would like to make a substitute motion, would that be done now or after?
No.
Um, I would, uh, motion that we get, that we, um, um, allow the applicant to go back and move this to a next meeting.
Uh, to what?
To the next meeting. To take, to continue the, the, the item, yes.
Continuance on this?
Yes.
Second. Second.
Okay, we do have a first.
Okay, so, uh, to continue the item to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, I have a first by Commissioner Messin or Vice Chair Messin, and I have a second by Commissioner, uh, Marshall. I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Uh, this is to, this is to continue the?
Yes.
Move it to the next meeting? Um, no, I, I vote no.
Commissioner Marshall?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Messin?
Yes.
Chair Kerth?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Marsh voting no.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize to the applicant. It seemed it got a little messy there, but a, as you may have felt it was to you, it was kind of dropped in our lap here, and when it comes to security, and these could potentially be high-dollar issues. I, I personally think, um, let's take a breath, let's get, let's continue. Let's see if we can get a security plan in and see if there's something that, um, something that can be done, um, you know, it's, it's thirty days, and we'll take it up from there. Thank you. That moves us on to item, uh, number two. Site plan and conditional use, uh, for the wireless, um, tower. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number two is case number PLAN twenty-four dash zero 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 nine. This is a site plan and conditional use permit with an environmental exemption to allow for the construction of a sixty-five-foot wireless communication facility, stealthed as a pine tree at the rear of a property, Zone C two, General Commercial, and currently occupied by the Scandia Family Fund Center. This property is located at one-two-six-two-seven Mariposa Road. And for reference, within the Scandia Family Fund Center, uh, this would be at the, uh, rear of the site away from the frontage. Uh, as proposed, the applicant is seeking this conditional use permit and site plan to allow for the construction of this tower, uh, and is, it is designed to resemble a faux pine tree. Um, the upper antennas will be installed at a centerline height of fifty-six feet, with the remaining height above and below the antennas used to complete the conical pine tree shape. The facility and its associated equipment will also be enclosed within an eight-foot-tall, uh, block wall enclosure area, uh, at the base of the tower that is also located at the northwest corner of the site. Although the proposal exceeds the C two height limitations, uh, of forty-five feet, staff finds that the height is appropriate, as the applicant has demonstrated in the included propagation maps, that the area lacks adequate coverage and has no viable alternative, alternative sites at this time. Uh, staff also finds that the proposal meets all the other development standards of Title sixteen as proposed, and the applicant has additionally agreed to enhance landscaping along the entire eastern site perimeter, incorporating pine trees and shrubs that will integrate with the existing landscaping and create a natural appearance that blends the tower into the site. Uh, with regards to the environmental review of this project, the California Environmental Quality Act, Section one-five-three-zero-three, allows a categorical exemption for the construction and location of new small facilities or structures, as well as the extension of utilities. Staff considers the proposed wireless communication facility an extension of the wireless network, and therefore utility, and is therefore exempt from CEQA. Uh, with that, staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, receive testimony regarding the proposed project, and take the following actions. Find the project categorically exempt per CEQA Section one-five-three-zero-three, titled New Construction or Conversion of Small Structures, and adopt Resolution number P dash twenty-five dash zero zero two, approving the conditional use permit portion of case number PLAN twenty-four dash zero 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 nine, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and adopt Resolution number P dash twenty-five dash zero zero three, approving the site plan portion of case number PLAN twenty-four dash zero 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 nine, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and staff remains available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff on this one? Okay, seeing no one, I will open up the public hearing, and, um, we have a speaker card with the applicant first?
Um, our applicant is, uh, Chris Colton.
Good evening, commissioners. I represent, uh, Towercom, who's building this site for Verizon Wireless and for future tenants. We appreciate your consideration. We appreciate staff effort in this, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Nope, don't think so. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We do.
Just one, one question. After this is constructed and you put the pine, uh, uh, apparatus around it to disguise it, uh, as I drive through the city, I see many of these poles, and I'm not only concerned about this site, because it's way in the back, but I see many of these poles just barely, uh, having the, the, uh, pine covering and so forth. Not really covered in it.
That's a good, uh, question, Commissioner. There's, if you drive through town and look at the, the trees that have been done over the years, I mean, I think we're going on about fifteen, twenty years from the oldest ones. And unfortunately, some of the oldest ones, looks like, I call them, uh, wire brushes. Looks like something that you're washing your cup out in your, your home. Um, in collaboration with the city having more requirements on branches and the companies who make these, doing these better, the branch count is more, there's more density. You can also see in our drawings, uh, that we'd have to comply with, that the tenants would either have to put socks on here. These are just large, uh, netting that has, uh, more pine, faux pine branches, or they have a film from three M that does a really good job. They can put it right on the equipment. Uh, they also paint the equipment. If, some equipment can be painted, others need to put a film on it. So in a combination with that, the faux bark cladding that in this case goes five foot above where the branches start at fifteen foot, which is another measure, we start the branches at fifteen foot. Sometimes in the past, they start them at twenty, twenty-five, thirty foot. So all of these measures will help ensure that it's more realistic as it's installed in your city. Welcome.
Actually, I have one, and this is, this is just for my own curiosity. Are there other, uh, modalities or models beside a pine tree, uh, for the desert environment, like a Joshua Tree? Or, and, and the answer might be no, but I'm, I'm just curious.
Absolutely. So the challenge with the desert environment is a lot of the natural trees in the environment are low-flung or lower to the ground. And so in order to have the height that the radio frequency engineers need with Verizon and other carriers, and most importantly, to design sites that will have to accommodate two or three carriers, that's why the, the pine, or sometimes it'll be like a broadleaf, um, is designed because it screens the equipment the best. Unfortunately, the Joshua Trees, or we do a lot of business in Arizona, and sometimes I like faux cactus or cacti. The challenge is to have a sixty-five or seventy-foot, uh, cactus. It doesn't, it does more, it detracts. It doesn't really blend in and calls attention to itself. So, so in Arizona, they found like traffic cameras and other things that are not wireless networks. It works perfectly. Or, uh, uh, like, they call small cell, where it just covers a smaller area. But this is a, a macro cell that covers a larger area, including residents, freeways, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your time and consideration.
Welcome. Do we have any other speaker cards on this item?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I will, um, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission with any, um, any further comments or, or a motion. Um, I just wanted to say quickly, before we do that, um, in the past, we've always, um, uh, had concerns of the height of these in comparison to the surrounding structures. And this is the first time I've seen that it's, it's actually opposite of that, to where the surrounding structures are so huge, this tower looks miniature, so, thought that was interesting.
I move to approve the project as condition by staff.
All right, Commissioner Thomas, second.
I have a first by Vice Chair Messin, a second by Commissioner Thomas. I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Messin?
Yes.
Chair Kerth?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Congratulations, that one's passed. That moves us on to item, uh, number three. Staff report, please.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you Chairman Kerth, fellow commissioners. Uh, item number three is case number PLAN twenty-four dash zero 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 two-two. Uh, it is a site plan modification and conditional use permit modification that was previously environmentally assessed to allow for a new three-phase plan to replace the previously approved phasing plan on properties zoned R one, single-family residential within an initiative area at the northwest corner of Hook Boulevard and Amargosa Road. Uh, in September of twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission initially approved the overall project, uh, which allowed for the development of a commercial shopping center, including a drive-through restaurant, a car wash, and two commercial buildings to be developed in two phases. Uh, following the planning commission's initial approval, uh, the applicant approached the city, uh, noting due to market uncertainties and the loss of an anchor tenant, a revision to the project phasing was necessary to allow for continued momentum with development. Um, this revised phasing was formally submitted and approved by the planning commission in December of twenty-twenty-three, uh, which allowed the project to then be developed in three phases, but with the initial phase required to include two tenants, uh, the Mr. Carwash and Chase Bank, as well as, uh, off-site, uh, street improvements, uh, setback landscaping on both Amargosa Road and Hook Boulevard. Um, this first phase also required, uh, was, was required to include all perimeter walls, uh, and setback landscaping along the project's north and west boundaries, and all, uh, interior circulation and driveways, parking, lighting, uh, landscaping, the onsite improvements. Unfortunately, uh, as the applicant attempted to push forward with this revised phasing, uh, changes in the tenant commitments again necessitated the applicant request, uh, second revision to the project phasing. Uh, the applicant, this time approached the city in October of twenty-twenty-four, uh, proposing to remove the Chase Bank from the overall development and replacing the bank with a fitness center, uh, for the initial phase one. Uh, this latest, uh, phasing proposal will secure the right-of-way and site improvements as previously required, uh, while still ensuring the development of two major tenants, uh, with the initial phase. Uh, this first phase will include a fitness center on pad four, uh, anticipated to be at Planet Fitness, and the Mr. Carwash still on pad one. Uh, beyond this initial phase, uh, phases two and three, uh, would commence in no particular order, uh, and will consist of pad sites for a future drive-through restaurant and an additional undetermined tenant at this time. Uh, as noted previously, the environmental assessment was previously conducted for the project with the original planning commission approval, uh, adopted by the planning commission in September of twenty-twenty-three by Resolution, uh, P dash twenty-three dash zero-two-one. Uh, the planning commission may recall on, or may rely, excuse me, on the adopted environmental exemption, which pursuant to Section one-five-three-three-two of the California Environmental Quality Act entitled Infill Projects, this site plan and conditional use permit modification and its impacts, uh, have been determined to be negligible, and therefore no further environmental review is necessary. Uh, therefore, staff, uh, would recommend that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, receive testimony regarding the proposed project, and take the following actions. Find the project previously assessed under the adopted environmental exemption for the original shopping center project, case number PLAN twenty-two dash zero 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 three four, adopt Resolution number P dash twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-five dash zero zero four, approving the conditional use permit portion of case number PLAN twenty-four dash zero 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 two-two, uh, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and adopt Resolution number P dash twenty-five dash zero zero five, approving the site plan portion of case number PLAN twenty-four dash zero 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 two-two, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Uh, staff is available should the commission have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Questions? Okay, seeing that, I'll open up the public hearing on agenda item, uh, number three. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing on number three, and I will bring this one back to the commission.
I'll make a motion to, um, adopt, uh, agenda item number three according to staff recommendations.
I second.
I have a first by Commissioner Marsh, Marsh, a check, second by Vice Chair Messin. I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Vice Chair Messin?
Yes.
Chair Kerth?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Thomas voting no.
Thank you. Next item is number four, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number four is case number PLAN twenty-four dash zero 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 two-three. This is an amendment to the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exemption to make various changes to Title sixteen of the Victorville Municipal Code, including but not limited to new and updated definitions, new land use allowances and standards related to thrift retail stores, revised landscape standards, and an update and clarification to tentative track map periods. Uh, these amendments are initiated by city staff and are being proposed in order to address recent state assembly and senate bills that address allowances for the approval period of tentative track maps, as well as the permitted operation of retail thrift stores. Additionally, uh, staff took this opportunity to address some clarification and cleanup items with relation to landscaping for single-family residences as well, as well as commercial and industrial developments. And there are also associated, uh, definitions included in this proposal that will support these proposed changes. Uh, specifically, these proposed changes include the addition of a retail thrift store, I'm sorry, a thrift retail store as a permitted use within the Neighborhood Service District, the General Commercial District, the Health and Wellness Overlay District, and this is in compliance with Assembly Bill twenty-six thirty-two, which requires local jurisdictions to allow these such uses anywhere that the sale, sale of similar new merchandise is permitted. Uh, this is a state requirement, so we're updating our code to meet state law. Subsequently, that state law also allows the city to implement, uh, certain operating standards. So staff took that opportunity to add operating standards for these new thrift retail stores, um, which will, uh, regulate donation, drop-off locations and times, area, uh, established, of establishments dedicated to donation and acceptance versus processing, um, as well as enforcement of health and safety issues, and specifically, uh, emergency egress and illegal dumping. With regard to the landscaping, uh, changes proposed, uh, for commercial and industrial districts, staff added regulations that enhance landscaping and project frontages, uh, requires a minimum of three decorative rock sizes or types for ground cover, and prohibits bark or wood mulch to be used as permanent or, uh, primary form of ground cover. Uh, these standards were largely, uh, being included in practice during plan check and within the commercial and industrial design guidelines. Uh, but these changes clarify those standards and make them uniform between commercial and industrial districts. For, uh, single-family standards, this proposal was largely a clarification of existing code, and it was proposed, um, in order to clarify these single-family landscape standards and assist our code enforcement division in their proactive code enforcement efforts. Uh, what we have seen in the field is that there was, uh, concerns with, uh, when homes were approved and what landscaping standards were in place, so this proposal clarifies that. Uh, homes built in two thousand and five based on their building permit activity until current are held to our current standards. This is due to ordinance number, uh, two-three-two-two, which was adopted, uh, on January twentieth, twenty fifteen, which, uh, uh, adopted the landscape standards for front yards that you see now. Uh, that was the time that they first became effective. Um, we included regulations for those homes built prior to twenty fifteen. Um, we have minimum standards between twenty, two thousand and seven and twenty fifteen. So, uh, this will clarify what to do for code enforcement prior to twenty fifteen. The standards are less than what they are twenty fifteen and later, because their standards were less at the time. And it also clarifies, uh, code enforcement actions to take on half-acre or larger zone lots. Uh, as you know, many of these lots in the city were developed under county, uh, regulations and had no landscaping. So in those cases, those, uh, lots are permitted, uh, to maintain no landscaping. However, they are required to, uh, cut weeds and, and maintain that, that, that area in their front yard. Um, homes that have been built subsequently, uh, since twenty fifteen, their, their entitlements did include front yard landscape plans, so code enforcement can then enforce those plans to, as they were approved in the entitlement. Uh, so this, uh, proposal achieves that with regards to single-family landscaping and will assist the code enforcement department. And lastly, this proposal, uh, will, uh, take advantage of Senate Bill nine allowances. Uh, specifically, this portion of Senate Bill nine, um, allows municipalities to, uh, extend the approval period of any tentative track map, uh, up to forty-eight months. Uh, what law says is that we're required to approve, approve them for... Uh, what law says is that we're required to approve, approve them for twenty-four months. Uh, previously, you had an additional twelve months that you could add to that, which the city had adopted, and this extends that, that period that the city can extend upon an additional approval to a total of forty-eight months. Um, so we are taking advantage of that. It meets the requirements of our housing element to, um, support housing development within the city. Um, we also took the opportunity with that to look at existing track maps in the city and see where that could be retroactively applied. Uh, so there was an attachment here that would retroactively apply this to some track maps that has been, um, updated since that, as you'll see in your late edition memo. We were made aware of Assembly Bill twenty-seven twenty-nine, which added another eighteen months to all housing entitlements within the city by state law. So with the updated, uh, memorandum you were provided this afternoon, this will effectively, in some cases, provide allowances for SB nine as well as, uh, AB twenty-seven twenty-nine or either or. Uh, we took the opportunity to look at which one would benefit the project most and provide them the most time. That's why the, uh, updated table has two different sets of timeframes. Some take advantage of both, some take advantage of one or the other, but it is, uh, designed to provide developers and these maps the maximum amount of time to be developed in the future. Uh, and lastly, these code amendments address, uh, the definition of a timely filing of a tentative map. Essentially, a timely filing upon expiration of a tentative map, a timely filing, once that is made to the city engineer, it extends the life of that map until it is recorded. However, our definitions, uh, were, uh, not a hundred percent clear, and they were not to the, uh, level that the city engineer deemed appropriate. So we've taken the opportunity to clean that up and, uh, clarify that per the direction of the city engineer. Uh, with that being said, staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, receive testimony regarding the proposed amendments, and take the following actions. Find the project categorically exempt per Sequoia Guideline Section one-five-zero-six-one-B-three, and adopt resolution number P dash twenty-five dash zero-zero-six, recommending city council approval of municipal code amendment case number PLA N twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-two-three. And staff remains available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for that report. Um, questions on any of that from the commission?
I didn't have a question, just a comment. I just wanted to thank staff for including the eligible track maps, uh, because when you do the math, we're doing, that's over a thousand possible lots that would qualify for that extension, and that's a lot of homes. So I appreciate having that break, that breakdown. Thank you.
Okay, then, any, anything, anybody else? Questions on this? Then I will open up the, uh, public hearing on agenda item number four. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
I will close the public hearing on agenda item number four, uh, bring it back to the commission for a determination.
I motion to move item four as, uh, proposed by the planning staff.
I second.
I have a first by Commissioner Marshall, a second by Commissioner Thomas. I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Messon?
Yes.
Chair Kirk?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us back to, uh, continued public hearing item, uh, item number five. Staff report, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chairman Kirk, fellow commissioners. Uh, item number five is Plan Case PLA N twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-three. Uh, this is a site plan, uh, with a proposed mitigated negative declaration to allow for the development of an approximately four hundred thousand square foot warehouse distribution building on two vacant M-two heavy industrial zone parcels, totaling approximately eighteen acres, uh, located at the southwest corner of the logical extension of Cactus Road and Mesa Linda Avenue. Uh, the proposed warehouse distribution facility will be comprised of three hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight square feet of warehouse space and fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-three square feet of ancillary office space provided across two floors, uh, with the facility offering seventy-two, seventy-two total truck dock positions located along the south side of the building. Uh, parking will be provided onsite for upwards of ninety-one tractor trailers with screened, within a screened truck court, and a hundred and seventy-eight stalls for passenger vehicles have been provided to accommodate employees and visitors along the north and west sides of the building. Uh, the facility has been designed to house a single tenant, which has not been identified at this time. Uh, this project was continued from the planning commission's November thirteenth and December eleventh meetings, uh, to afford the applicant time to address comments received during the Sequoia review and public noticing process. A response to the comments received were provided in attachment F of the staff report included for the planning commission's consideration. Uh, the project site is located south of and abutting the logical extension of Cactus Road and bordered by the extension of Mesa Linda Avenue on the east and Cantina Drive on the west. Uh, the proposal is located within an area of the city's zoned industrial, uh, generally north of Mojave Drive, west of Diamond Road, and east of Highway three ninety-five. Uh, while this portion of the city is presently vacant, the overall area is slated for industrial development based upon the current light and heavy industrial zoning, with several industrial projects already reviewed and approved by the planning commission in this area. Access to the project site will be provided by four driveways, uh, one primary truck driveway along Mesa Linda Avenue and a second along Cantina Road, with both of which, uh, are circulation element designated roadways, allowing both inbound and outbound access, as well as two along Cactus Road, also a circulation element roadway. Uh, both driveways along Cactus, uh, will provide inbound and outbound access for passenger vehicles. Uh, in conjunction with the proposed development, the project is conditioned to pave Cactus Road from Highway three ninety-five to the project site as well as Mesa Linda Avenue south to Mojave Drive, uh, should these noted improvements not be completed by previously entitled projects in this area. Uh, staff finds the facility is well-designed in accordance with the city's industrial design guidelines and incorporates architectural enhancements and features such as wall plane and parapet height variation, panel reveals and tilt-up walls, and an enhanced office entry that includes additional wall plane variation, canopies, and, uh, panel inlays. Uh, regarding the environmental review, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration have been prepared for the project in accordance with section one-five-zero-seven-zero of the California Environmental Quality Act, and all of the proposed mitigation measures have been included within the proposed conditions of approval. Mitigation measures for air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, uh, geology and soils, and traffic were included in the proposed mitigated negative declaration that will ensure that any potential effects on the environment are considered less than significant. Therefore, uh, with that, staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, uh, receive testimony regarding the proposed project, and take the following actions. Adopt the attached mitigated negative declaration with a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project, and adopt resolution number P dash twenty-four dash zero-five-five, approving the site plan, case number PLA N twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-three, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Uh, staff, uh, and the applicant are available should the planning commission have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on this one? Okay, then I'll, uh, go ahead and I'll open up the, uh, public hearing on agenda item number five. Speaker cards?
Yes, our applicant representative, Tom Stinos.
Good evening.
Hello.
Happy New Year. My name's Tom Stino. I'm the architect and representative for this project. Uh, we've been working on this for quite a while, worked with staff extensively, and I think we made a lot of progress on this. Uh, it's a good project. As you see from the location of it, uh, there's nothing out there yet. So by being able to, uh, put a project in that location, I know there's additional projects that are being built, proposed in that area. So it will, that area at one point will be filled up and, uh, it'll have services out there. So, four hundred thousand is going to be, got that, got a benefit to the city by bringing in services, uh, jobs, the extension of services out to that area. We've been environmentally sensitive on the project. We've taken care of all the issues that, uh, from our Sequoia, uh, issues we've had. So I like to think that, um, from an environmental standpoint, we're doing all the correct things for this project. Uh, the tax base will, uh, benefit the city as well. Jobs, we're bringing in jobs in the community in this area. And we have support from the local unions on this one here. As well, these guys here, I believe, are here for our project tonight. We've had a lot of letters from, uh, differing agencies that, uh, have, I, I believe, been, uh, supported now from those issues. I like to talk about the conditions. We are in agreement with the conditions, and, um, staff has been great. Thank you, Travis. Do you have any questions from me?
Any questions for the applicant's rep? Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Julie Liu.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, City Council of Victorville. My name is Julie Liu, and I'm a representative out of Local nine oh nine. That's the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. And on behalf of the Western Regional Council of Carpenters and my brothers that we have here in this room, uh, we are in support of the project. Um, I would like to mention that the developer has committed to work with contractors that will hire locally and utilize apprentices from a state certified apprenticeship training program, such as what we provide. Um, I would like to express my support for this project as I believe that it will benefit the environment and the local economy by practicing protocols that will protect worker health and safety, most importantly, and incorporate adequate environmental mitigation. Just want to mention again that my brothers here in this room live in the city and work in the city or would like to work in the city, so we hope you guys consider that. And again, we are in support of the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Delshaun McClellan.
Appreciate it. If it falls, it works. How you guys doing today? Again, my name is Delshaun McClellan. Like my partner said, I'm a member and a resident of Victorville, but I'm also a representative of the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. We, uh, represent over six thousand members that live and, uh, recreate in the vicinity of this project. I'm asking for you guys to vote in favor of this project for, uh, just many reasons, as she's already stated. Um, the developer has, um, ensured that he's using skilled and trained workforce, local hire, which is good for our members. Like I said, we have over six thousand members and just a little over eleven hundred that live in Victorville and, uh, Hesperia as of right now. Um, uh, this brings, uh, community wealth to the city of Victorville and our members, which are your constituents. Um, just asking that this project will also have over a hundred, uh, hundred construction jobs that will give the city of Victorville a, a better now and future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Zach Kahoon.
Good evening, Honorable, uh, Planning Council. My name is Zach Kahoon. I'm here to speak in favor of item number five, this Psycho Logistics Project. In twenty nineteen, I got delivered from a powerful addiction to meth and other drugs. I met the Lord Jesus Christ, and he became my friend, and he taught me how to live again. I see, I soon became an overseer of hundreds of men and women of a major residential recovery facility. One of the things the men and women need after getting saved from their sins and sobered from drugs is a job that can provide for them and their family. This project would bring hundreds of temporary jobs in construction and permanent entry-level position jobs. For the reason that I ask you to approve this project, for this reason, I ask you to approve this project for the families and the men and women that are in a transitional phase of my program, and thank you for your, your time. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Zach Strasters.
I got some of that nice, uh, dust in my throat here, so, excuse me. Uh, first of all, thank you guys for taking the time to come out. It's dangerous out there, so your sacrifice is not in vain. Uh, your time fulfilling your civic duty is appreciated by the folks in this room and the folks that are going to be impacted by the approval of this project. Uh, my name is Zach Strasters. I'm here on behalf of CARE California. We're in support of the project that's before you here tonight, and I want to give you three simple reasons why we're in support. Uh, first of all, because we recognize that we're in the sunset of the arc of industrial development. And for cities out here in the high desert, uh, like Victorville, it's important to be able to approve these projects because we are looking at an architectural type that is under attack by and large in Southern California unjustly and unduly. And we recognize that private development is not always going to be able to, uh, you know, fulfill what the social needs are based on a lot of the scrutiny that takes place with these projects. However, organizations like CARE California, we come in, we don't, uh, side with developers or approve or promote car, uh, projects carte blanche just because we take a look at the impact, uh, we take a look at the way that they've impacted the local community, what the tenure and the relationship with the developer is with the local community, and whether or not the project makes sense. So in this sunset of the arc of, uh, uh, industrial development with regards to tilt-up style, we believe that cities like Victorville are definitely going to receive heavy benefit from that. Not only because all the guys in orange vests behind me and the many hundreds of temporary construction jobs that are created like Zach Kohun mentioned, but also because when you look at a map and you look at some of, of the organizations that have put, uh, big tilt-ups in Victorville, these are organizations like Rubbermaid and so many other organizations that are hiring lots of people. They provide a lot of income for families, especially entry-level families in Victorville and throughout the region. Second of all is that regional impact. Approving the project tonight is not just a land use issue in Victorville, it's a land use issue regionally. Because we got to make sure that we're leaving the door open because the approvals that they're asking for tonight are not outlandish. They're basic approvals to be able to do what a four hundred thousand square foot industrial building needs to do. So it's a regional land use issue because we're making sure that we are still pushing the line forward so that families can trust that Victorville is making the right decisions with their future. And thirdly, that, families, what Zach Kohun mentioned, what the guys in the orange vests are here to do, and why this is a land use issue is because we want to make sure that Victorville continues to be hospitable and amenable to families. We want to be able to develop families. This is why we have planning commissions to make sure nobody's asking anything crazy, and if they're not, that we approve projects. Simply put, that's why we're asking you to approve tonight. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Josh Gastelum.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, uh, Planning Commission Chair and, uh, fellow commissioners. Uh, it is my honor and privilege to stand before you and speak to you guys today. Uh, my name is Joshua Gastelum, and, uh, I am here to speak in favor of the Psycho Logistics, uh, project. Um, I was a drug addict and homeless, uh, for, for many years. I was a detriment to society. Um, I was lost and broken. I, I had no way of, uh, getting out of my addiction until, uh, I found my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and I entered into a Men's Christian Recovery Home. I am now proud to say that I am three years clean and sober. Uh, not, not only do I stand here advocating for, uh, men who are getting their lives cleaned, but I'm here as an advocate for the men in my, uh, Men's Christian Recovery Home. And, uh, as, as we are getting cleaned up, uh, we, we, we're looking for stable employment, something that we don't have to, uh, rely on, um, welfare or things like that. We're trying to find a, a, a decent way of, of making money. And, uh, projects like these would, would help us, uh, continue to, uh, provide for our families, but it would also bring us a, a way to, uh, restore our dignity, our self-respect. Um, so, uh, I would like to, um, for that reason, I would like to ask you to vote yes today. Uh, it would, it would not only help men and women who are in recovery, but it would also help the greater, uh, community, uh, of Victorville. So for that reason, I, I strongly urge you to vote yes. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Moon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, uh, David Moon with the Plumbers from San Bernardino County. I'm a lifetime resident of the high desert here in every city. Um, this project allows our hard-working men and women to advance their careers while earning a, a decent wage and insurance. Uh, most importantly, the developer has made a pledge to hire local and skilled construction workforce members to build their vision. Ensuring a high quality project. Okay, thank you. And ensuring the community's basic economic needs by supporting the people all around. This project is a great, uh, is great for our community and we strongly urge you to approve it with your yes vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adrian Barrigan.
Uh, good evening, uh, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Adrian Barrigan. Uh, I am here with a contingent of your local ironworkers and we are here to ask for your support, uh, in voting yes for this project tonight. Uh, this project will bring, uh, much needed growth to the city of Victorville, especially given that the developer has made a commitment to hire local. Uh, it's a guarantee that the residents of this community will be able to provide for our families, not just because of the very good fair wages that we earn, but because of all of the medical dental benefits that our jobs provide to us. Uh, and we know that many of our families do rely on those benefits. Uh, I have spent the majority of my life here in the high desert, living in Hesperia. So like all of you know, uh, we are no strangers to the types of commute that we have to make, to make a living. Uh, so I think it's important for us not just to take the economic benefits into account when we're approving a project like this, but also to consider the quality of life that we want to create for our workforce. Uh, ever since I've began my apprenticeship with the ironworkers, my employment has taken me all over Southern California. I have worked in Long Beach, downtown LA, Disneyland, uh, Edwards Air Force Base. I've, I've had to go work as far as Poway. And the opportunity for us to, to stay close to home, uh, stay off those roads. You guys know what the weather conditions are like. Uh, you guys know how, how bad traffic can be. Uh, we have drunk drivers on the weekends, early, early in the morning. The hazards in our employment are not just on the job. Uh, so I ask that you please support these jobs, help support your local labor. Thank you very much.
And our final speaker card is Louis Lopez.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Staff, Community. My name's Louis Lopez. I'm a business agent for the Ironworkers Local four thirty three. And I kind of want to give some different examples. Um, first off, I was back here earlier and one of my members, uh, back there, Craig, can you step out please? So Craig been living out here, um, for over fifty years. He's been part of the union twenty, almost thirty years. Trying to get hours to, uh, retire. And I asked him one question, Craig, how many, how many jobs have you worked out here in the last thirty years? Not one. I lived out here seventeen years. I had seven daughters. My last daughter just graduated from Hesperia High School. All seven of them graduated from Hesperia High School, so they knew our family. But in those seventeen years that I, uh, that I lived out here, I only worked one job and that was the, uh, juvenile detention center off there, off of Dale Evans. And that was probably, uh, twenty two years ago. Um, so it's tough on our trades out here. The difference between our trades, a skilled and trained workforce is all our, all our apprenticeships are three and a half to five year programs, okay? When you talk skilled and trained, I want to put it in this perspective. If you were getting a surgery either for yourself or for your loved one, your spouse or your children, I'm sure you want to make sure that that surgeon is qualified to do that job. Went to the proper school, got the proper certifications, and that's the difference between a skilled and trained workforce. In the state of California, every one of our trades are certified by the state of California. Okay, so you're not getting a worker that's standing out there at Home Depot that's not skilled. Okay, and I'm not trying to talk bad on somebody, but I'm saying that because we've gone through the proper schooling and got the proper certifications, that's why we're certified, that's why we have the title skilled and trained. There's a big difference when you ask somebody, it's like if this, we were to get in an earthquake right now, I think all of us would want to see this building withstand the forces that are going to come against it. How do you do that? By making sure it was built properly from the get go. And the applicant here, there's not very few, many jobs out here in the, in this high desert that are full union. So he's willing to make the example and say, hey, I want, I want to offer the city of Victorville the best that we can for the money because honestly, we are up to about ten dollars an hour more than your regular worker. And a lot of those workers come from out of state. Okay, they're coming here to make a dollar and take it back home. The money that's made here is going to be spent here by all these men and women that come into the apprenticeship programs that want to work close to home, that need to be, that need to work close to home. Our veterans that are coming out, every one of our trades have a partnership with Helmets to Hard Hats. Those men and women have a direct entry into our programs. I ask that, that this project gets passed.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
We have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to the commission for a determination.
Uh, Commissioner Thomas move, uh, for approval of the, uh, staff.
Recommendations.
A second.
I have a first by Commissioner Thomas, a second by Commissioner Marsh. I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Messon?
Yes.
Chair Kirth. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next we move on to, uh, any presentations of reports by, uh, commissioners and staff and, and, um, this is typically what we kind of do with the end wrap it up. If anybody has anything to report, say in, in general.
No report. I just want to, uh, commend, uh, Commissioner Cook Askins and thank you for your service. Been great working with you.
Commissioner Marshall?
Nope, this is a great first meeting.
Yes, it is. Mr. Marsh?
Oh, just wishing everybody a happy new year, uh, well prosperous new year, uh, prosperous year where, uh, past the new year. But, um, and also, you know, it's been a pleasure. It was a pleasure working with, uh, Commissioner Cook Askins. Um, wish you the best and I know that, you know, you'll have further endeavors in the future and, you know, it's been, like I said, it's been a pleasure.
Commissioner Messon?
Yes, I just had, um, a couple of things. Uh, I know previously, uh, Commissioner Cook Askins had asked for like a year of review of projects we've approved. I wanted to see if we could get that again. Um, and then I also wanted to know if it would be possible to have like a map or an outline of, um, the industrial, the industrial, um, park area that we've approved by Mojave three ninety five of recently approved projects. I, you know, I personally go back agendas and try to piece them together. Um, since we are seeing a lot of development and even extension of roads over there, it would be nice to see something visual of everything that we've done so far. Um, I'd appreciate it if staff could do that. Um, and then I also just wanted to, uh, congratulate staff in the city. I saw, um, Sue had sent out a report and it was published in the daily press of all the upcoming projects and improvements that are coming and it's really amazing to see that work start soon. I know a lot of them are along Mojave Drive, um, which I have voiced has been a concern, especially with, um, some of these industrial projects that are coming in. So it's nice to see those improvements coming in. Um, and just want to wish everyone a happy new year. Kenneth, it's been a pleasure to sit on the commission with you and I'm sure I'll see you around.
And I concur with those comments. Um, anything, Mr. Haraghi?
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Uh, yes, we can definitely follow up with that information requested, um, on, on previous, uh, items that have gone through the planning commission. And I did wanted to note, uh, one item that the twenty twenty five Planning Commissioners Academy is coming up in March. It runs March fifth through March seventh. Um, it's in Santa Rosa, California this year. So, uh, staff, one of my team members will be sending out an email to, to poll the commission on who'd be interested uh, in that. So we can plan accordingly for that coming up in a couple of months. Other than that, happy new year.
Great, thanks, uh, happy new year to you as well. Um, thank you everyone. Um, have a good evening and meeting adjourned.